The City Council Committee on Ordinances, Licenses and Legal Affairs, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, will meet on Thursday, March 30, 2023, at 6:30 p.m. for the purpose of discussing amending two ordinances relative to traffic, Federal Street. This meeting will be held in person at City Council Chambers, 93 Washington Street, Salem, Mass., second floor. Individuals may listen, view, or participate remotely in the meeting via a remote participation platform called Zoom through either of the following ways. Please click on the link found in the agenda, password 975925, or telephone 853-5257, or 888-475-4499. Webinar ID 830-70621728. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so on matters not requiring a public hearing, we will post on the city of Salem's website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. The City Council Committee on Ordinances, Licenses and Legal Affairs, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, met in Council Chambers on March 30, 2023, at 6:30 p.m. for the purpose of discussing the matters listed on the agenda. Notice of this meeting was posted on March 23, 2023, at 2:45 p.m. In attendance, we have all members of the committee present. We also have Counselor Merkel, and remotely, we have Counselor Watsonfelt, who is on her way in. We also have with us Dave Kucharsky from Traffic and Parking, and Lieutenant Tucker is with us here in the room from the Police Department. So tonight, we are talking about Number 151, an ordinance amending traffic, and Number 152, another ordinance amending traffic, and all of it has to do with Federal Street from Washington Street to Boston Street. So I think what we'll do is, first, I do want to explain, one of the reasons why this was sent to committee was because this is a Ward 2 item, and it was pretty complicated. And the Ward 2 counselor was not at the City Council meeting last week, and so because there were some questions that were brought in, I figured it would be, it would make more sense to bring this to committee, allow the Traffic and Parking Department to show us some diagrams to better understand what all of the removals and additions and cleaning up the books is involved in this, these two ordinance changes. And I do have to say that this will be a case study in what happens when you don't keep your ordinances up to date. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kucharsky, who can do a share screen. And we, I think the best thing to do is to start with the section from Washington Street to North/Summer. I would love someone to tell me what it is at that point, if it's North Street or Summer Street. Lieutenant Tucker?
Intersecting with Federal or with North Street?
It's North Street. Where does it turn to North Street? At Federal?
At the Witch House.
Oh, sorry. So, yeah, you should actually come up here anyways. We're going to get him to the mic. So he just said that it changes to North Street at the Witch House. Did not know that. Okay, so it, so it's Federal Street from Washington Street to North Street. So, Mr. Kucharsky, if you want to show your screen, and we can start with that diagram.
Can you all see this?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor. So what you're looking at here are two areas of the same area. On your right is Washington Street, to the left is North Street. At the top of the aerial is showing you essentially what's out there today. We have metered spaces. We have two types of resident parking. The solid line represents 24/7 resident permit parking. The dash line represents resident parking that only goes into effect at 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 a.m. Those spaces are otherwise metered. We also have some designated police parking in purple that's adjacent to the courthouses, and signage reflects an accessible parking space in blue. At the bottom is what we're proposing, and in this particular case, the biggest change you'll notice is the dash screen, which was for resident parking essentially in the evening, that whole stretch, we're proposing would become 24/7 resident parking. And if council approves it, we'd remove the meters. One of the impetus for this is a lot of those structures on the south side of the street that were historically law offices, given the courthouse across the street, have turned over into condos. There are more residents in the area, and there's been some confusion with the, when is it okay for a resident to park? Can they park at a meter? And so on. So looking at it and trying to take that into account, we thought it'd be good for residents, visitors, and enforcement to know that these areas will be resident parking 24/7. We also noted that the accessible space, although signed out in the street, is not in the ordinance right now under Section 58. So the amendments that we're proposing would account for things that were passed in the past that hadn't been rescinded, and again, cleaning up the fact that we'd like to extend the resident parking in this area 24/7. Happy to pause there if there's any questions, or continue with the rest of Federal Street.
Okay, thank you. I think, I think we discussed this before, the area that's for the police car parking or whatever, law enforcement. I don't think there's even a sign there that says that right now, right?
There, there is some signage that's out there.
There is?
It may be faded. So as part of this, again, if council approves it, we'd work with DPW to update some of the signage that's out there to make it clear.
Okay. Okay. Any members have any questions? Counselor Dominguez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. David, how are you, Domingo? I just wanted to be on tune with what is exactly the content of the Neighborhood Association in regard to this matter that we had in front of us. I'm not too clear exactly what would be the change. You say that, that the one on purple represent across from the courthouse, but what I hear, the comments I hear is about North Street. What is all about North Street that is concerning the Neighborhood Association that I don't see? What is the impact that they're going to have on it? Will you please go over that? If you don't mind?
So this particular section doesn't include that. In the later sections that I'll review, we were recommending that a residence located at 27 North Street be given eligibility to purchase resident parking. It's, it's off the map. It's just south of the intersection with, with Federal and North Street. And it would, the way the ordinance is written, we would say that the dwelling units in that particular building could get only up to one permit per dwelling unit, no visitor passes. I think that's where some of the pushback you've been hearing from the Neighborhood Association and others, saying that there's enough strain, I guess, on the parking, and this would add to it. But I think there's only six, there's six units, so there'd be six passes, if approved, that could be handed out at that particular residence.
So just to clarify, I think that the change that we're seeing here in the ordinance is just the extension of the green line, which is the resident parking, down one full building, maybe?
Correct. And again, it, it's currently resident parking, it's just not in effect 24/7. So what you're looking at here would make these four spaces, and I assume you can see my cursor.
Yes.
It would convert these four spaces into resident permit parking.
Okay.
And it would make this one space here that has resident parking overnight, it would just stay as a metered space. Again, anyone could park overnight in these spaces without having to worry or pay at the meter. As you probably all know, the meters are in effect from 8:00 in the morning till 6:00 in the evening. After that, someone parks there, they're not obligated to pay.
Okay. Counselor Cohen?
Sorry.
Thank you, Chair Marcello. I'm very supportive of this. I remember when probably half of the buildings on that stretch were law offices, and there really wasn't any need for resident parking. So I do have a question for you. Should we be voting, like, on these individually, or should we, like, should we vote on this?
So I was going to clarify that in just a minute, but is there any more questions on this diagram here? Okay. So just to clarify, the ordinance section that goes along with this diagram, it's the second one in the packet that starts Section 1, Section 50A of Article 5, be amended by inserting the following: "Federal Street, Handicap Parking Zones, Northerly Side." So there's, so in other words, there's two ordinances in front of us. It's that one that's, that's the, that's this section here. Okay? So, so let the record show that Caroline is now with us, or Counselor Watsonfelt is now with us in person. Before we move on, Counselor, do you have any questions on this section? This is just a section from Washington to North.
No, thank you, Chair. Not being a member of the committee, I do have just a couple quick comments about this section, just for the, sorry, I just ran up, I was a little out of breath. This section, it's notable that we are adding those four spaces to full-time coverage. Specifically, I think that's a net add to the whole Zone E area, Zone C area, which is a benefit. I also want to thank Counselor Cohen for his comments. That's very similar to my own thinking about, this in my mind is a one-for-one. We had a one-for-a-business, now we have a one-for-resident kind of conversion, is how I think about this section, that matches the conversion of the use. So I'm also very much in support. Thank you.
Perfect. Okay. So we could take a motion on this ordinance, which is the second one. If there's no, there's, I don't hear any amendments that are being requested, so Counselor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Marcello. I move that we accept this ordinance 152 as written.
Counselor Cohen, motions to refer this back to the council with a favorable recommendation for first passage.
Yeah, that.
Seconded by Counselor Varela. And now that we're all here, we can just do, yeah, we were here before. We can do a hand vote on that, just the members of the committee. All those in favor? All those opposed? It passes 5-0. Okay. Mr. Kucharsky, if you want to move on to the second section.
Sure. Thank you, Counselor. Can everyone see this new image?
Yeah.
I hope. Okay, great.
Is there, actually, is there a way for you to enlarge that, or is, no, actually, you can't, if we want to see both? Go ahead. There, okay.
I could just toggle back and forth.
Okay, yeah, that would be good. It's better.
So at the top of the screen here is an aerial essentially from, on the right side is North Street, on the left is Beckford, and this is showing what's existing. There's a lot of red on this, and that's where I think a lot of the ordinance amendments are coming from. There's a long history, I think, of restricting parking on this, on this entire route from north to Boston, and things were never rescinded. They were just sort of added on to each other. So what we're trying to do is, is clean this up. So at one point in the past, I guess the north side of Federal Street here had a parking restriction, and then there were two separate parking restrictions added to the south side that you see here in red. And then also, there was a Section 74, sort of purple, no parking tow zone in this area as well, that was added, related to a doctor's office. So it was, it was essentially for the doctor parking, temporary parking. So what we're proposing, scroll down here if I can. I'm sure I can. Sorry, technology is...
I don't see a scroll in there. That's fine, Dave. We can see.
Toggle, so, but basically, what you see at the lower part of this is, we're designating the entire stretch of Federal from north to Boston as resident parking, which is what it is today, but we're extending it to include these last few residences. Again, it converted from offices to residents, and we're recommending that it simply just be completely for resident parking, Zone C, and then just having one parking restriction on the south side, which again, doesn't preclude the residents on the south side from getting resident parking, it just means no one can park there. So that's from north to Beckford. I'll move on to the next one. On the right-hand side is Beckford, and this one goes to Flint. Again, a lot of previous ordinances that restricted parking, you could see on both sides of the street in the past, as well as resident parking. And then again, a small area of no parking tow zone near the intersection with Flint, but there's no signage out there to reflect any of this. And at the bottom of the screen, again, simply designating the whole stretch as resident parking for both sides, but maintaining that restricted parking along the south side of Federal. And then the last piece is from Flint to Boston. Again, in this case, there seemed to be a lot of restrictions on the north side, but then I think at some point in time, there were signs put out on the south, just tried to chicane the parking. I think it was an attempt to slow some traffic down. We're just basically trying to reflect the signage out there, understanding what was done in the past, and sort of goes, the parking restriction goes from the north side to the south side, and then back to the north side, and removing any other tow zone or parking limited, which again, there's been no signage or need for it. So this section would again, clean it up. The thing that Counselor Dominguez was referring to is, like, as part of this overall package, we recommended that 27 North Street be given eligibility, again, that's six units, it would be six passes if needed by the residents, to be able to park in the Zone C. So with that, I'll pause and take any questions you might have.
Counselor Doming, oh, actually, let's go to Counselor Watsonfelt first. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Not being a member of the committee, I think I can speak to Counselor Dominguez's concerns and help represent the neighbors in that, in that area. So a little bit of the, a couple notes for starters on this specific section, Dave, if you don't mind seeing, if you can zoom in on the section from north to Beckford. If you look at the top half of the, of the, actually, look at either one of the images that we've been given here, the specific areas, including that business conversion, again, very similar to what we're seeing across from the courts, those are, those look like sort of two, two houses with units in them, and then there's this PBD Essex property. But part of what the neighborhood is really feeling the stress of in that specific area has to do more with this very historic, extremely dense historic chunk right here, which is immediately to the left side of the PBD Essex Museum. That area is, and it's important to note that this is also true for the entirety of Federal Street from north to Boston, is actually far more dense than I think people immediately, initially realized. There are a lot of rental units, a lot of individual units and condo units, both that are rented and purchased, in all of these. Otherwise, there's many single-family homes, but there's also a number of additional units that are not visible necessarily from the street. But this is an area where you can really see it. It is made really clearly visible here. You've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and I actually think that there's a seventh property right in that little chunk. And there is a real stress for resident parking by those folks there that share that one stretch of the street, because there are some folks, the renters that live there, that all care, you know, keep different schedules and all kinds of things. But this, I just wanted to point it out, because it really indicates the, I think, the expressed need, that sort of expressed stress of sharing that stretch of land. And, you know, currently, we have residents in that area that are, you know, begging their neighbors to block their driveways at night when they come home, because, you know, one's a nurse and she works multiple hour shifts back to back, and there's a real, it's a real pain point. So the idea of being able to extend this here, even though it looks like only two small properties, actually will really relieve, give some relief there to those folks. And this would be in addition to the number of parking spaces, of course, across the street as well, which is also Zone C. The issue of 27 North, and this is where we get a little bit into the history lesson, is that in 2018, that building was also a conversion of units from, I think one was a business, and then to that business office on the first floor, there had already been four units in the building, but that business unit was then additionally, it was converted, and there were two more units put in. So now there's six total units in there. You can see when you look at the diagram, that there is off-street parking, but there is room for only, and Dave Kucharsky, please keep me honest on this one, I think it's four cars?
Yes.
In that location? Thank you. So at the time when the conversion took place, the ZBA voted that they allowed for a parking variance for that property, because there was a, in their minds at the time, ample parking available to those additional residents in the downtown area. And because it was one of these conversions, they did not qualify to join the Resident Parking Pass program. And so now, that is why we here now have the question on the table. Are we, as a council, going to decide to include this property that had been previously not eligible to join the Parking Pass program, which includes six, as, you know, if we did one per unit, if we approved that, six additional cars now in this shared area? So the concerns from the residents are a couple things, and I think that they're all really fair, for my part. One is this is slippery slope, right? There are a number of properties that have been converted in the downtown where these parking variances has been, have been allowed, where ample parking had been deemed available in the downtown, and I think what we're seeing here now is the increased stress of that, of those properties, and those, that, those rulings compounding now into an increased stress on the parking that's available in the downtown, vis a vis the increased number of residents who are now looking for parking. So the first is, like I said, it's this precedent. If we were to include 27 North in this, does that mean there are a number of other properties? I can tell you in Ward 2 in the downtown specifically, there are, and it comes up a lot, and I have big, big concerns about potential precedents and by including 27 North. In addition, I think the question from the, from the residents is, you know, we kind of need to stand by the rulings that are made. If, if the ZBA said there was ample parking, then why now? You know, I think they feel it's a real bait and switch. Why now should those folks that are already, you know, I just showed you that area, already really struggling, need to increase the potential stress in their neighborhood by an additional six cars? So on the one side of this argument, I will say, you know, the piece, the other ordinance that came in, in my absence, that was passed by first passage on the Essex Street stretch, again, was a similar one-for-one, in my mind, a one-for-one conversion. It was a former business with an out, you know, street parking that we now, you know, we're being asked to convert to resident parking, so that that, that conversion could help relieve the stress in that neighborhood. The 27 North Street is an outlier. And so I am looking forward to hearing the conversation from, from this committee, but I definitely, as the Counselor, I would recommend, if nothing else, we take this out and vote on the other stretch of this, the rest of the cleanup, and the stretch from north to, you know, to, I think it's 80 Federal, that, that increases the resident parking. So my first request would be, let's take 27 North out entirely and talk about that. I think it's, it's going to be the trigger for a much larger, longer conversation. But I do think that the Federal Street neighbors need relief, and I am very supportive of every other aspect of this ordinance. Does that help answer your question, Counselor? Thank you.
Do you have anything else? Counselor Dominguez?
Thank you, Chair Marcello. I just want to thank the Ward 2 Council for clear explanation. I think that was part of my, my questioning. I hear a lot of comments on some of the neighborhood, and I think that's basically what is exactly the main point, the 27 North Street. I'm in favor of taking that out, and I'm in favor, if, if that doesn't happen, I don't think I can vote yes on that, based on the fact that I hear so many comments. And I think that we, we have to understand that we, we have to hear the voices of the neighborhood, which is actually the one that are going to be impacted. So my heart is for the resident of Ward of Federal Street, and I think they speak loud and clear that they, that something that may be impacted, I'm going to be with them. So that's all I want to say. Thank you so much.
Counselor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Marcello. So I have a comment and then two questions. The first question will inform whether I'm going to ask the second question. Okay. My comment is that, for no fault of their own, the residents of 27 are residents of the Neighborhood 2. And, you know, and they obviously haven't lived there as long, but they're, you know, I have an attitude that whether you live in a neighborhood for five minutes or your whole life, you're still a resident. My question is to something that Caroline got, Counselor Watsonfelt, sorry, asked Director Kucharsky, is, does 27 North Street have four off-street parking for six units today?
Yes.
Okay. So that makes me feel, so I'm not going to ask my second question, because that actually makes me feel a little bit better about the situation, assuming that, which I can't, we can't, that each one of them has one car, but if they do, then, then there's really only distress for two of the units. And, and, you know, I'm very comfortable with separating this, but I do, I do feel strongly that we should always look at any resident in neighborhood as a resident of the neighborhood.
Counselor Watsonfelt?
Thank you for that, Counselor Cohen, and I should have said so myself. I absolutely agree with you. I think that, that, you know, I think the other piece of this conversation is that there's a lot of compassion for folks out there that are struggling to find parking, especially folks that are renters, which of course also limits their flexibility to move location, which I think is definitely a part of the conversation. They are absolutely members of the neighborhood, as are everybody else moving in, right, moving into this neighborhood. And I think, you know, just to reiterate, the, there is definitely a need to address these stresses from a much larger perspective, outside of just this one corner. And, and yes, you're right, you know, of course, if we could say, let's just give this one, this one unit or these two units passes, you know, maybe that's even a different conversation, but I'm not, I still think it sets a precedent. But, but, you know, I think you can't do that. You kind of have to make it accessible, right, to everyone in the building. If that's the exception we're going to make, and we're going to allow it, then, then that's kind of the problem. And I think, again, that it's a slippery slope, you know, if we, you know, I get, I hear from residents at 7 Crombie, for example, which again, does not qualify for resident passes, and, you know, when that converted in 2007 without parking, that's 17 units. And so you can begin to see, even though we care about our neighbors, you know, mathematically, it just becomes untenable at a point. And so my concern is, can we, can we somehow address that bigger question, that bigger conversation about parking zones and all kinds of things, which I've spoken to, to both of the Davids tonight quite a bit, over and over, and I'm sure the conversation will continue. But I think you're right, yeah, I do acknowledge they are absolutely members of our, of our neighborhood. It's not about keeping people out of our neighborhood. It's about, or any other neighborhood. It's, I think in this case, it's really about, what does that mean from a setting precedent perspective, and what are the dangers there? Thank you.
Okay. If there's no more questions, I'm going to open it up to the public for any public comment. If you are in Zoom land and you'd like to make a comment, you can use the raise hand function or star nine on your phone. Okay, seeing none. Would, before we go on, Dave, I think you also had a red line amendment that you wanted to let us know about?
Yes, Counselor. So I submitted this to the council. While we were going back and forth through this, we realized there was one error, and I think I... this, we realized there was one error, and I think Counsel Watsonfeld, I think it was yesterday, it's essentially just changing, from Section 51, the way we had it written was, "Federal Street Parking Prohibited on Certain Streets, Northerly Side, from Eastern Property Line of 186 Federal to Intersection with Boston Street." The red line changes eastern to western property line of 186 Federal. That would be the only change that I hope can be reflected.
Okay. Thank you. So counselors in the room, that's at the bottom of the first page that we're looking at right now, in the section that says, "And Inserting the Following," and it's on that page, it's the last section, "Federal Street Parking Prohibited on Certain Streets," just change eastern to western. Okay. Yeah, now we need to start over, Dave. Just kidding, just kidding. All right. So if someone would like to start by make, proposing that amendment, Counsel Dominguez?
Thank you, Madam Chair Marcello. I would like to make a motion to have the amendment on the initial proposal to have 27 North Street out of the equation.
Okay, so that is, just so everybody knows, that's on the second page. It's the very last item under "And Inserting the Following." Zone C, color green, number 27 North Street, to be included to obtain resident sticker parking permits. Only one permit to be issued per dwelling unit as defined. So your motion is to strike that whole paragraph, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Counselor Cohen?
Excuse me. If I could make a friendly amendment, Counsel Dominguez, to include changing the first page, "Federal Street Parking Prohibited on Certain Streets, Northerly Side, from Eastern," changing that word to "Western," property line of 186 Federal to intersection with Boston Street.
Okay. So, okay, so Counsel Dominguez has proposed that we remove the last paragraph in Section 4, to remove the allowance for number 27 North Street to obtain resident sticker parking passes, and also to change the word eastern to western on the last paragraph on the first page of "And Inserting the Following." And so I'm going to assume Counselor Cohen is seconding that? Seconded by Counsel Cohen? And we will take a vote on that. All those in favor? All those opposed? It passes 5 to 0. Okay, so that's on the amendment, and now I will take Counsel Dominguez.
Thank you, Madam Chair Marcello. I would like to make a motion to refer this to the full council with a positive recommendation to be approved.
As amended.
As amended.
Yep.
Thank you.
Counsel Dominguez, motions to return, to refer this back to the council as amended for, with a positive recommendation for first passage, seconded by Counsel Varela. All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries 5 to 0. Excellent. Thank you very much, Dave and Lieutenant Tucker. You were, we couldn't have done it without you, Lieutenant Tucker.
Thank you.
I will take one more motion. Oh, wait, Counsel Watsonfeld?
Thank you. Point of personal privilege, this request from Federal Street neighbors for this level of relief has been ongoing, as was the case with the Essex Street request, and, I mean, ongoing almost a year or more. And so I just, a personal thanks as their representative tonight to the committee for sending both back with a positive recommendation. Thanks.
Great. Thank you very much. Counsel Dominguez?
Thank you, Madam Chair Marcello. I would like to make a motion to be adjourned.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Merkel, hold on. Counsel Merkel.
Sorry, Chair Marcello, I just had a quick question. So what you just voted back was both 151 and 152?
Right, we did 151 previously, or we, yeah, we took the second one first.
Yeah, okay.
And we referred that back with a positive recommendation.
Okay, so.
And now, yes.
Both, okay, just for my own clarity.
Both are referred back positively, yes. Counsel Dominguez?
Once again, motion to adjourn.
Counsel Dominguez, motions to adjourn, seconded by Counsel Varela. All those in favor? All those opposed? The matter carries. Thank you very much, everyone. Thanks again.